Thank you all for showing up this evening. It's always good to see faces out in the crowd. It is about 6:03 PM, Thursday, September 13th, 2018. We begin every meeting with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, Mayor Bennett would like to dedicate the moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll be led by Councilman Cross and Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. During our moment of silence tonight, I would just ask you to keep in your thoughts and House Ways and Means Chairman Tim Brown, Indiana House of Representatives, was involved in a very serious accident yesterday up in Michigan. He's a good friend of mine. He's been really good for Terre Haute the last few years. He's been very helpful to us in a variety of ways. He can kind of know some of the things that happened. He's helped make that happen for us. And it really struck me yesterday when that happened. He's really a great guy. And so, just, he's in critical condition. He's in a medically induced coma. And just would ask that you keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers tonight, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, myself.
Councilperson Oller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Present.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Oller, present.
Thank you, myself. We are about to get into our 30 minutes of public comment time that we offer at the beginning of each meeting. During that time, if you could please try and limit your comments to about three minutes, that would be appreciated. There are a lot of people here this evening, and I think a lot of people might be wanting to speak. I know a lot of you are here to speak on the issue of the pool. And I have asked Mayor Bennett to address that before we get into public comments, maybe so that some of your questions may be answered before that time. So at this time, I will turn it over to the mayor. And as soon as he finishes, we'll get into public comments. And I do have a sign-up list of people who have signed up to speak. If you didn't put your name on here and you still wish to speak, we'll get you up there as well. Go ahead, Mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett, thank you for this opportunity just to say a few things. I won't be long. You know, when the announcement was made that the pool was closing, I mean, your kind of natural reaction would be there's going to be some pushback because that's really the only publicly accessible pool 12 months of the year. And so, you know, one of the concerns I had is, you know, kind of what's happening with the Y and, you know, what were the reasoning behind that? And so, I've had some conversations with the Y regarding that. But then a group came to me, which I'm sure they'll be speaking here tonight, as related to, you know, how do we save the pool? I think of reaching out to the community at large, not just me, but you guys and everybody else. And so, there's clearly a significant need for a publicly accessible pool. You know, we are the landlord. We own that building. We own the pool, per se. The Y leases that building, and they provide the activities there, which is great. Perfect partnership with how it works. I think it's important that we work through the process. And so, I've really been working with them really for the last couple of weeks. Met with the group several times, and have met with the staff and board president. And we're working on some ideas of how we could do this. It'll take a three-legged stool, if you will, partnership to make this happen. It's going to take some private donations, public contributions from that perspective. It's going to take the Y, and then it'll take the city as the landlord and the maintenance provider, if you will. You know, we take on a lot of those responsibilities anyway. So from the city's perspective, I think we're willing to take on a little bit more of that responsibility. So we're working through a budget now to take a look at what exactly it costs to operate that pool. We know what it costs to operate our Dimming Park Pool, so there's some interesting comparisons there. We have been down and looked everything over multiple times. We've had local plumber in there, companies from Indianapolis that takes care of our pool, and just a variety of things to really get a handle on that side of it. I think where we're at right now today is that we need some assistance from these folks back here and the public at large to figure out how we help with the funding gap that the Y has to operate that pool. The city can be a player in that, but it's not just, you know, I've had people asking me, you know, why would the city do that? Well, the city needs to do it because from a quality of life, quality of place perspective that we're dealing with all the time, from an economic development, all of our conversations we have with potential people who want to locate in Terre Haute, a pool is one thing that's on a big checklist, you know, that we have, that we can offer to folks that are working seriously at Terre Haute. And I don't want to eliminate anything off that list. I think it's important that we preserve and keep those kinds of things and keep adding to the list versus removing things from the list. So I think it's important for the city to be a player in this. I don't see that as being a long-term commitment of anything other than kind of what we're doing and what we're going to do. But we're working on a plan that we can roll out here very publicly very soon, that once the Y kind of agrees to that strategy, which I've got good feedback so far. And hopefully, we can get the pool back open, get the Y to find those funding sources to sustain that over time. And then we can all enjoy the pool and kind of go back to our, us being a landlord down there specifically is fine. We just want them to be successful. That's the bottom line. So, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. President. A lot of the details still have to be dealt with. We're negotiating a new lease. Our old lease has expired. We're on it month to month. And so, we've already had those discussions, Eddie's been working with our attorney anyway before this even came up. So we're just looking to kind of tie that together and complete that process, and then put a 12-month plan together and then kind of go from there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, now we will jump right into public comment. I'm going to start with a name at the top of the list and simply go through. There's one individual who signed before the pool group signed, so I'm going to let him speak. He did sign first. So at this time, Donald Hyde.
Yeah, my name is Donald Hyde. I'll be real quick. I was going to take and talk about number four on my list, and that's called housing. And I'll wait and do that next month. I'm here because this should be a very interesting meeting. The city has, the mayor has admitted and pointed out that the pool and the building that the Y uses is city property. Now, finally, I get to say to you guys, you have a chance to prove yourself as leaders, whether you want to or not. You have to. What I know about the YMCA from all the years that I've worked at their old YMCA that still stands empty, I can tell you right now, the main thing they had going in that old YMCA, the number-one program that brought them there every single day, and if we'd have been open on Sunday, it'd have brought them there on Sunday, was that pool. And that pool was open from the minute the YMCA opened up, nine o'clock, until it closed the youth part of it at three. And then it stayed open for adults after that. Now, I used to be the night guy that stayed there all night for five years. And I'm telling you, the YMCA pool did not close until nine o'clock at night. So it was open for 12 hours. Each, each time it was open for those 12 hours, it was open for one half hour. And one half hour all the time for five years. Now, that half hour means that there were 24 half-hours, and 24 different groups of people came and swam. And you went there once. That was all you got that one day, was that one time. That's how popular that pool was. And it was going on even after I left in 1980. So I'm telling you right now, a pool is a big thing. And the mayor is right about one thing. That's one of the things, the YMCA back in those days was one of the main things that builders would point to when people wanted jobs to be located in this town. That YMCA back then was the number-one thing they'd mention, and that pool. Now, with that said, leadership is what you guys do when you raise funds. Now, one of the problems the YMCA had, and I was around in 1980, and I heard the talks, they were tired of going out and raising funds. They really were. They all got tired of, they wanted to go out and do something. They wanted to raise the funds up a little bit here and there, and they wanted to do things that would earn money at the YMCA, turn it into a business. And I'm here to tell you that the proof's already in the pudding. Doing it as a business alone, taking away the charity part of it, didn't work. The place closed. Sitting there now, empty because of that. Poor management. It was not a business. It's a charity. You have to go out and raise funds from the public. Let me check out fundraisers. You have to come up with a way, get the public to donate. And I've got news for you. They were donating, they did donate. At one time, the YMCA raised more funds than all the other charities combined did. Why? Because the YMCA served more people than every other charity did. It was the one charity that was number one. And don't take my word for it, look it up. I believe that a fundraiser of some kind could be organized. And that's where the nine of you and the mayor come in. You've got to come up with a way to raise funds. And I believe that the cost, not just the cost of maintaining the pool, but I believe you can raise enough money not only to maintain the pool, but in a two-year period or three-year period of time, you could raise money to rebuild the pool without spending a single taxpayer dollar. And I mean that. But you've got to remind the public that the YMCA is a charity, and that they are benefiting from this pool, and that everybody can go in that pool. It will be held open for all. When you get the community to come together where everybody's part of the community and everybody feels like they're part of the community, you can raise funds.
Thank you.
I'll go at that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the list is Pat Bringman.
Mr. President, members. This is very difficult, just following him, I'm following him, and it's all done. We can go home now. It was very good.
I'm sorry, and forgive me for interrupting. If you could give your name and your address when you come up to the podium.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Patricia Bringman, and I live at 5937 West Darwin Ferry Road, Terre Haute, Indiana. All right. My position tonight is to thank you people who have been stepping up to listen to us. Events of the past several days, including comments by Mayor Bennett yesterday and many other days, indicates the pool may be open in the near future. All of you city council members have played a very significant role in the positive, I'm sorry, all of you city council members have played a very significant role in the positive developments. You've promptly replied to our emails and our phone calls and our asking you for meetings. And your schedules are busy. And we want you to know tonight that we really appreciate the time and the efforts you have put in for us. And so, thank you very much. We also wish to acknowledge the support we've received from community advisors and for the significant direction that Goodwin was willing to offer. And thanks to all of you for recognizing all the benefits we have been attempting to bring to public awareness. And at this point, we would ask that you continue, and I hear again, the mayor probably took care of all this just a minute ago. At this point, we would ask you to continue to keep the aquatic program in your sights for the next few years as we all move forward in our efforts to achieve financial sustainability. And again, we're very thankful that you have listened to us. So, I did put some other things on here for you to read and consider just for your attention. And I'm not going to go into those right now, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next name on the list is Vera Kyle.
Hi. My name is Vera Kyle, and I live at 1890 Birch Run Road in Terre Haute. And I, you have a seat in front of you, I could probably talk around it without using it because of the passion that I have in all of us have for the pool. But before I get started, I just would like everybody that's here that's using the pool, could you stand up to just let them know who we are? Thank you. This is just a small portion of us. We represent at least minimally 500-plus people that use that pool on a weekly basis. And that was based on estimates that we were able to see, not on estimates or numbers we were able to get. I'm an avid and assertive and vigorous supporter and user of the Y pool. My background, I'm going to share with you, is, I'm an engineer, I'm a program manager, but all of us come from those very backgrounds where we have skills, where the pool has become more of a passion because it allows us to exert our skills in our community. It draws people to the community. I spend two to three hours, five days a week in the pool. My concerns are shared by many that use that pool, that it was closed September 1st, 2018, with less than a month's notice by the Clay County leadership, and without options or alternatives available for Y members or the community. I use the pool as a communal supportive place where I could manage my mobility issues you saw when I got up. It's the only place I could maximize the money I spend for the, you know, the price of membership, and I can get the physical activity I need after having most of my back fused. It's cost-effective, it's more cost-effective than spending money on physical therapy. You go through physical therapy appointments a week, and you're spending a lot of money. And the pool, I mean, it's, although we may be offering to even spend more for that opportunity, it's still cost-effective. And it's better for me than increasing any need for pain medicine. And that's an issue in all of our communities. Using the pool is priceless, and it's a benefit to me and hundreds of others would agree. The pool is a gem, G-E-M, for Vigo County community, and we should never let such a bright beacon of our community be dimmed or closed by those who don't appreciate the value that it adds to the citizens of Terre Haute and the opportunity it provides for us to take action to improve our health physically, socially, and mentally. I've tried to do physical exercise outside of the pool, but because of my multiple bone fusions, where I was once paralyzed, in a chair and unable to use my arms, hey. I am limited in what I can do, but in the pool, I can move, I can do laps, I take the aerobics classes, I can't do that anywhere else. The closest and extensible option is 35 miles away in Spencer. It highlights that Vigo County, Terre Haute, has very few therapeutic wellness activities to offer its aging and disabled, or exciting fun water sports for youth without the pool being available. And we don't want to lose it. We don't want that to be lost. We don't want it to be true that it's closed. We want to thank the council, Pat has already mentioned it, and the mayor, for aiding with our plan to make the pool a supported and long-term asset for the entire community. Most of you, if not all of you, have been contacted by one of our group in person, by email, to garner your support. And that's how you do it, you smooth the way so that you're comfortable and happy and understand our issue. I want to mention that the pool also has a social aspect. It's important to building a bridge across generations where any age can come together, play together, and support one another. It offers social arena of like-minded individuals to work on their wellness initiatives in a diverse and inclusive environment. The pool draws from Terre Haute and surrounding communities, with some of our people driving 20 to 30 miles several times a week to participate in classes and get their exercise in. By supporting the pool, we are making an active commitment to the wellness of the full range of our citizens, almost 70% of the community that's over 50, and fun options for the youth. We can't allow the pool to go quietly into that good night. I don't know where the quote's from, and I know you've heard it. The building is holding, the holding the pool is owned by the city, leased by the city to Clay County Y, overseen by the Parks Department, and city council, and mayor, we have skin in the game. There's a responsibility to make sure that its priceless resources are properly managed and available for current and future health of our citizens. What you can do is approve the budget that I know it's coming, that keeps the pool going until this vigorous and determined group of citizens can work with you to implement a sustainability plan for our community. We need you to act positively to save our community and to save our pool. And that's the end of my statement, but I do want to say, I'm really proud that we were able to have access to you, that you listened to us, and that you're here listening to us now that we have this platform to share. Because in other places that then, it's not as easy to talk to the council and have you listen. So thank you so much for the opportunity to work with you. And we are here, and we are in force. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the list is Ramon Arredi.
Mr. President, Councilman, Honorable Mayor. My name is Ramon Arredi. I'm a retired orthopedic surgeon and a current resident at 6671 West Meyer Drive. Now, I've been a member of Terre Haute community for the past 40 years, both as a resident and also practicing my specialty. Now, during this time, I have seen closing of multiple industries, as you might already know, like J.I. Case, IMC, Pfizer, Alkan, and soon to be Sony, probably, and the retail stores like Kmart, they used to be two, actually, when I first came in here, Montgomery Ward, Macy's, Carson's, Gangnam Mountain, to name a few here. The loss of these businesses have impacted this town, as you know it, most notably with the youth population exodus as a consequence. Now, this has in effect left a feeling of apathy, you can see here, among the minds of the people about the future of Terre Haute. Now, it calls for elected officials like you and community leaders to come together with plans for progressive thinking, dynamic initiatives, to attract businesses into the community and to support the ones we have. The closing of Y pools needs such an action on your part. The YMCA is an iconic organization and worldwide recognizable symbol of community service. Yet, this institution is dying here. Can't a metro area of 150,000 population support a single public swimming pool? For some reason, the Clay County Board is the current operator of the Terre Haute YMCA pool and the YMCA itself. We do not have put their heart or efforts into effectively managing and growing our Y pool through efficient budget management or marketing and fundraising. Otherwise, we wouldn't be in this situation. I've been using the pool regularly myself for my painful left knee from arthritis, and like many of the citizens, senior citizens here with various physical ailments. Now, from a medical perspective, water is the best method for rehabilitation of the And I used to recommend to many of my patients in my practice, with the demise of Y pool, there is no other options left for seniors in this community. Now, this is an invaluable asset for our community and cannot survive or continue to function unless there is an ongoing monetary support from the city-county governments together to supplement fundraising and membership fees. So I urge you, our elected officials, to support this invaluable service to our community and its long-term survival. Thank you.
Next on the list is Kristen Tegenkamp.
Hi. My name is Kristen Tegenkamp. I live at 81 South 19th Street here in Terre Haute, Indiana. I'm here to speak on behalf of our community and the role and importance of our YMCA pool as well. Of course, my interests are somewhat personal, but they also have, you know, our community in mind. I have two children, both of whom are diagnosed with severe autism spectrum disorder. And we use the YMCA pool regularly for aquatic and recreational therapy reasons. A lot of people hear recreational therapy and think of simply fun and the pool time, but this service really does provide tremendous growth in physical mobility, control, growth in motor skills, and a lot of other learning and calming techniques. Using the YMCA pool has shown some of the most significant progress for my children in any of the resources we've found available for special needs in our community. My daughter, Lillian, is 12 years old. She's completely nonverbal. She experiences several challenges in her everyday life and functioning. There is no replacement in our community that provides the sensory input and benefits offered by the pool. Providing sensory input and treatment, Lillian is able to cope and function more appropriately, with challenges ranging from her ability to simply tolerate clothing, to participating in community, and even consumer setting and routines, you know, store functioning, you know, everyday activities and routines. So, my son also, Taylor, he partakes in these therapies. He's nine years old, also diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder and has severe communication and speech delays and many sensory intolerances. He uses the pool for self-combing, has improved drastically to decrease some self-injurious and aggressive behaviors that we're seeing in a lot of our upcoming youths. I mean, we're seeing more and more of this in our children with autism and disabilities. And the pool really helps him with those learning and life experiences. Access to the pool and all of its benefits, our family's and our children's quality of life definitely has improved. And as I said, there's no denying that the increase of young children making up our upcoming generations show higher numbers of functional challenges, delays, and disabilities. And the pool is an irreplaceable, is irreplaceable at offering effective therapeutic experiences for children and all YMCA and community members. The pool has so much to offer to all demographics in our community. I know that we all already know this, but I feel it's important to provide our upcoming generations of youth, our youth with special needs, all persons with disabilities, our senior citizens, and all community members with this crucial resource. In doing so, we provide an opportunity to help create a more productive society for our future, and we appreciate and look forward to your continued support in our mission to maintain our YMCA pool, and hope that that happens. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. The last person I have on the list is Mary Maloney.
Thank you. Thank you, and I live at St. Mary of the Woods, 47876. My name is Mary Maloney. I'm a 79-year-old sister of Providence who lives in assisted living at St. Mary of the Woods. I came from Chicago as a youth of 18 to attend a college. Daughter of a policeman and a school clerk, in case y'all thought everybody's rich. I began teaching as an instructor at the college, then worked in parishes, trained as a spiritual director, spent 10 years as a hospice chaplain, and my final job was at chaplain in the a chaplain in the big metropolitan hospital. Along the way, I collected three master's degrees and lots of other educational experiences. And I'll brag a little bit and tell you that the last master's was a master's in earth weather C from Saint Mary of the Woods College, and I worked harder for that than the graduate degree from Brown University in Ivy League. It's still a good school, I said. Some of you might have been in the room when I had a spectacular fall at the Indiana Theater in April of two thousand seventeen. I crashed down ten concrete steps, terrible break of my right knee and my left collarbone. I left the Indiana Theater in a stretcher and spent two months in rehab at Saint Mary's. From there, I went through what is the usual round, I think, of inpatient, I mean, people came to Saint Mary's from the various agencies, the home health agencies, to bring me physical therapy in my room, and then I was at the outpatient physical therapy at Saint Mary's, and then the outpatient physical therapy at Bone and Joint, and then the outpatient physical therapy at ISU. And I'll have my last appointment tomorrow, I hope. So, when I could manage to get my walker out of the car, I said, if I'm ever going to have the strength to walk again, I'll have to swim. And so, I got up like I used to at five fifteen in the morning and went four days a week to swim at the Y. It took everything I had to, to get out of my building at Saint Mary's. I call it a building with a moat of buildings around it. So, just to get to the door, it took me a half hour, quite the project to get out here. But I know that I am walking because of that pool. So, when, I remember a sign at the Y when I first went there, and I've been going a whole, all the six years I've lived in this area, this time around, there was a sign that says, "Y is Community." That letter that came to us, as one of my friends says, most weasely letter I've ever heard, saying that they had consulted with the membership, and then down in the small print in the last paragraph, "And we're closing the Y Pool on Labor Day weekend," a month before they were closing it, was, it just took the heart out of me. And everybody there, I, who led many grief groups, have said, "We had a daily grief group of about fifty people in the Y every morning in the pool." As the coverage on the Channel Two says, "That Y Pool has a lift for paralyzed people, stairs into the pool, eighty to eighty-four degree water, which is perfect for arthritis." How many seniors in this community you, do you think suffer from arthritis? That's their resource. My own membership is paid by AARP Medicare Supplemental Insurance. And I'm asked to read another person's statement about her, her testimony. My pool story begins in April two thousand ten, when I was hit head-on. I shattered my L-one vertebrae down here. After surgery and rehab, it took a year before I could drive again. Walking was difficult. Sitting, sitting is still hard to do, and I agree, that's where I am too. In May two thousand twelve, I first got into the pool. I stopped, I stayed with water revolvers and could barely make it through the class. By the end of the summer, I began swimming laps, but by fall, my husband died, which left me alone and devastated. This woman's name is Charlene Vaughn, and she says, and I think this is kind of humorous, "You see, no one can see you cry in the pool, and it was better to be in the pool than home alone." The women there supported me through my grief and pain, and because of my time in the pool, I have cut the opioid use down to only one pill a day. Without the pool, I know that within a year, I will become bedridden, my addiction will return, and I will be isolated from the important social aspect of my life. The pool at the Y is life-saving for me." I agree. So, to tell you a little bit more of my story, this summer, I was annoyed because of the waste of water at Saint, at the pool. So, I talked to three different staff people, and one of them was Stephen Flowers, the new youth director. He encouraged me to think that I might be a valuable member of a green committee that the Y was planning. That conversation was such a shot of hope. After dragging through rehab for a year and a half, and, and I've been at Saint Mary's for six years now, I've been all this time saying, "What can I do with the rest of my life to be meaningful?" And I thought, "There must be something at the Y I could do." Well, then I get that letter. Something one of the sisters said at the table the other day reminded me of the story of the unjust judge and the persistent widow. Do any of you know Jesus' story about those two characters?
Yes.
If you don't, you can look it up in Luke eighteen, one to eight. But I'll tell you that the women who have been using the pool every morning for our health have great powers of persistence, and that's what the story is about. Do not underestimate us or kid yourself that we will go away with some little promise thrown our way. We believe we will be here in season and out of season until the pool is up to our standards of how we want to be taken care of and how we want our children taken care of. Notice, I have no qualms of talking about our children. I hope you don't either. And I'm going to say to everybody in this room, there's an old story that I used until, you know, I was sick of it, at all sorts of events in my years of preaching and teaching. It talks about two children who go to the village elder, and they think they're going to trick them, they say. "We're going to take this bird in our hand, and we're going to say, 'Elder, is that bird dead or alive?'" You'll, you'll say, "Well, no." We'll prove him wrong, whatever he says. Either we crush it or let it go. The point of the story is, the Y is in all of our hands.
Thank you very much. All right, we are through the list. If there's anybody else who would like to speak, I, I do ask, you can come up now, but I do ask that you try and keep it quick. We are through the list, but we do have other business to get to as well. But I will offer anybody else the opportunity to speak before we move on.
Good evening. My name is Anita Walters. I live at twenty-two oh four Burn Avenue in Terre Haute. I was not planning on speaking tonight. I'll keep it very brief. The reason I'm here is because I'm going to give you a perspective that has not been brought up this evening. A long, long time ago, I was an instructor at the Y Aquatics Programs. I was even certified by the Arthritis Foundation. I worked under Martha. Hi, Martha. And we had, we had a wonderful, wonderful program in the pool, and I'm here to tell, you've heard all these stories about all these people who are getting help from it. I was on the other side. I was helping these people, and I saw so many success stories. If I were to share them with you, we'd be here all night. So, I'm not going to go there. But now, I'm on the other side. I'm a student, and I hope you will share with me, by keeping the pool open, what I was able to help with others, because they're still around and they're still my friends, and they want to see that too for their kids and their grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Councilwoman Cross.
Yeah, I'd just like to say a couple of words. Anita mentioned it, but this originally was a YWCA, and there were a group of really determined women who went out in a community that told them that they couldn't raise enough money to build a pool, and with the help of a couple of great men, including Bob McGlothlin, he's still around, but many people know Dorothy Juris and Ann Prox and Mary Ed Baker and, and leaving out people Cathy Perry, but just Joy Halbert, worked their tail off to get the money in this community to build that pool. And they would be very gratified twenty-five years later to know that it's being used exactly in the way that their vision imagined that it might be. And I'm very gratified about that as well. It's not an easy thing to manage a pool from the side of the management team, and it's not a cheap thing to do, but it is a worthwhile thing to do. So, I just wanted to give that little bit of perspective. Maybe I should have gone to the mic instead of from council seat. But I think certainly I appreciate that, all the things that you've said tonight, and I'm sure many of the other folks up here do too, and I thank you for your efforts, and I thank the mayor for making the effort along with a lot of folks in the community to try to make this happen. It's a resource that we shouldn't lose. Thank you.
Councilwoman Morris.
Is there a member, is the director here, the Y, was he notified that you all were coming? He or she, I don't know who it is, but are any of the board members? Nobody, nobody chose to show up?
Yes, yes, yes. We moved the deck early on, and they thought it was a daunting task, but could not be handled.
I just wish they would have attended tonight and doing.
So do we.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Yeah, I, I met with the president and also Mr. Penrod on Tuesday, about an hour. That topic came up, and I, it was my opinion, it wouldn't be beneficial for them to be here. It could only be negative for them. And I told them I would share with them what, what I learned today that doesn't get in print tomorrow morning.
I, I included in my paper for you a little clip from the newspaper this morning, and it, it struck me that, when I read that, it just said, "We don't, you know, we don't think what's happening to you is very important. We can go, you can walk your road, can you, because we're not there, and so, what's the problem?" And it, it, it really, I think it's totally what we're up against as far as them understanding what we are about.
Isn't, isn't there a corporate Y entity in the United States? And have they been contacted, or are they aware of the closing or the problems?
No.
I'm sorry?
No response yet.
I know in Andover, my wife's from Andover, Kansas, and they were, everything's different, I know, but they went through some difficult times, and finally, corporate came in and made some decisions, and you'd be amazed what it, the Y there is now. But I didn't know if corporate had been contacted about this situation.
We have skin in the game. We own buildings. We have leverage, and I think as a council, I mean, we're such strong and capable people, let's leverage that to get it.
Do you want to say a few more words?
Yeah. Just encourage the council to write to the corporate Y.
Okay. Thank you. I, I believe I speak for the entire council when I do say, we greatly appreciate you coming down here, and thank you all very much for sharing your stories with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, is there somebody else who wanted to speak?
Just here, if you mention the corporate Y in Chicago, Illinois, you're blocking my name of your address.
Okay. Thank you very much for that information. It's appreciated. Thank you. At this, at this time, we will end public comments and we will continue on with our, our business. So, having said that, Michelle, corrections to the journal?
There are none.
Communication from the mayor.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett, I gave you a new copy of the budget tonight. I didn't get to talk with all of you, but I would suggest to you just to get rid of the other one unless you had notes, carry them over. It includes the new public safety budgets in there. We made some minor changes. I mean, there aren't significant changes, but there were a lot of little ones. And so, you probably won't see a lot of it, but the budget did go down, and we'll talk about that, you know, next week. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, at this moment, I will make a quick statement, just, we'll, we'll take one or two minutes if any of you are wanting to leave now, or if you want to stay, you're more than welcome to, but I guess I don't want to make it awkward for those who are wanting to sneak out. Thank you all for showing up. Thank you very much. All right, I see all the regulars are still in attendance. Reports from city officials.
I don't believe there are any.
Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety.
There are none.
Reports from standing committees.
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees.
There are none.
Items previously tabled.
There are none.
Appropriations for confirmation.
There are none.
Items on second week.
Appropriation six, two thousand eighteen, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from local Rudden Street, number zero, uh, zero three zero two, zero zero one nine to paving, local Rudden Street, number four three two one hundred for three hundred thousand, and a workman's comp, local Rudden Street, number four three five zero one zero for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is previously tabled, and I have received correspondence from the mayor that he requested this be withdrawn.
Okay. Do I need to ask for a petition to speak on this, or is it simply?
Just a motion.
Motion withdrawn.
Second. It has been moved by Councilman Azar and seconded by Councilman Nasser that appropriation six, two thousand eighteen be withdrawn. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appropriations withdrawn. Next item, please.
Uh, Special Ordinance twenty-nine, two thousand eighteen, vacating a portion of the east west public alley located north of Park Street, south of Crawford Street, east of Ninth Street, and west of Tenth Street. No problems were noted.
Assistant.
Mr. President, members of the council, we discussed this at your meeting last week. This petition requests the vacation of the alley between Ninth and Tenth Streets, south of Crawford. The petition of Myrtlewood LLC owns all of the property south of that alley and three lots to the north at the west end. This is a former guaranteed roofing property. Tractor Tools Direct currently operates out of that property. Tractor Tools Direct is a dealer in small farm implements. That business was started in two thousand thirteen and grew from no employees in two thousand thirteen to eleven employees currently. In order to have merchandise for sale, they have, on average, fifteen semi-loads of equipment coming in on an annual basis, and at least one daily outgoing shipment on a tractor trailer. They would like very much to expand their operation, and in order to do that, they need to construct a new modern dock facility. The most advantageous way to do that would be to construct that dock on the property located to the west end of the property, of, to the west end, next to Ninth Street, on the west end of the alley, on the north side, and connect it across the existing alley to the existing building. As you can see from the drawings we handed out last week, much of that property to the south of the alley is occupied by existing buildings. There's not really a convenient place to build a dock that it would be accessible. Closing the alley would allow construction of that dock and future expansion of the business. There's also a safety issue with trying to cross the alley. There's also a safety issue with trying to cross the alley. The property to the west end of the alley, on the north side, is used for customer parking and employee parking for the business. And the building itself, on the south side of the alley, comes out very close to the alley, and persons walking from behind that to cross over into the parking area are at some risk of vehicles traveling down that alley. There was some discussion last week about the possibility of simply closing the alley, the west end of the alley, the three lots. I think engineering had reviewed that and did not think much of the idea, but I don't want to speak for the engineering department. Seems how they don't pay me to speak for them.
Members of council, Chuck Anis, city engineer. Our objection to closing off part of the alley is consistent with what we've always done. We don't like to create a dead-end alley. It's just been policy for years on end. So that was our objection to the partial, excuse me, the partial vacation of the alley. We don't have an issue with closing the entire length of the alley. But if we close off part of it, I think we'd be creating a problem. Happy to answer any questions?
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on, forgive me? Special ordinance 29, 2018.
Yes, my name's Donald Hyde, and I'm going to continue to ask the city council to ask questions. And I believe that everybody in the county now knows that what I was saying last time we met is possible. My God, you have and you change what you're doing with Ohio Street. It's a street. Then you close and build a new bridge, and you turn Ohio Street, or part of Ohio Street, into the new Wall Bank Avenue, where semis, trucks, all kinds of weight go by, and a lot of traffic goes by. Then you ignore a broken sewer valve. I might add, these sewer valves are underground. Weight pressing down upon the ground affects those. Whether you want to believe it or not, it does. A little leak happens, and slowly but surely, all the dirt is removed. And then a big, heavy object, in this case, a fire truck, goes over it, and boom, we have a huge sinkhole. And I might add, I've lived here all my life, that goes back to the 50s, coming forwards. I've never seen a sinkhole that big, ever.
Mr. Hyde, if you would please speak on the...
All right, I'm going to tell, it remains the same. If you're going to close the alley, I don't care. I seriously do not care. However, what I do care about is, are they going to build, whatever they're going to build, solid enough to take the weight of 20 and 30 years running over what they build? Or is it going to cause a sinkhole there? Again, I don't care, but I think you guys ought to care. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on special ordinance 29, 2018? Council, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name is Jack Ennis. I lived at 3663 Myra Court in the cottages. I previously owned Guaranty Roofing, or my family did, two years. Since the city has objections to partially closing the alley, I think I've made up my mind that, I talked to Cellular One, who has a cell tower on my property, there are two lots in the middle of the series of lots between Ninth and Tenth Street that they're referring to. And I think I'm not, I've talked to Lou Britton and Pat Goodwin, and I don't want to interfere with their business. If the city would not go along with partial closing the alley, as far as I'm concerned, just go ahead and close the damned alley, because it mocks next to me. As I found out that, I called Cellular One, who is a leasing of my property, they did not really particularly care. They would have liked to have access from the alley, but they evidently wouldn't object to having the alley closed. So I will withdraw my complaint, because I don't want to interfere with a man's business. I know what it used to be in business, and it won't affect me particularly, because it's, they have access, I guess, from Ninth Street, or not Ninth Street, from property. So I don't have any objection to go ahead and close the alley if they won't partially close it. Thank you. That's all I have to say. By the way, I know most all of you, and you all have crosses to bear. So anyway, I'm grateful for the job you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak on this ordinance? Right, council? I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm sorry?
I have just one question. The other property, have they been contacted, this property here?
Everyone adjoining the alley was sent a notice, certified mail, at the address to which tax notices are mailed.
And you never got a response from them?
No.
Either way. Do you know who it is? I mean by chance?
No, I don't.
Do you foresee a problem with that?
Mr. President, the clerk's office sends out the notices, and we do have a certified return receipt signed, that they received it.
They did?
Oh, I thought you meant, had we heard any objection from them? No.
Well, you haven't heard from them at all?
Um, there's a Kentucky data link, whose address is Plano, Texas.
That wouldn't further complicate things if they came back and objected, if we passed this with it. Their only opportunity to object is now. Right. Okay. So because they could still access off Ninth, or Crawford.
Crawford. Actually, they could access off Eighth, as, Tenth as well, because they own the lots from the corner inn. So if they could, they could come in two ways.
Are you? Councilman Nasser?
Mr. President, there's no other questions or comments. I make a motion, we approve special ordinance 29, 2018.
Second?
It has been, can I say a word real quick?
Councilman Nasser?
Those of you who know my passion for keeping alleys open may wonder why I've been so quiet about this. I am one of the 11 employees at Tractor Tools Direct, and I need to recuse myself from this and not vote. I don't know if we have to vote to let me not vote. Okay, so I abstain.
Thank you. Okay, the, it has been moved by Councilman Nasser, seconded by Councilwoman Crossen, that we pass special ordinance 29, 2018. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Okay. Special ordinance 29, 2018, passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please, Michelle.
Special ordinance 30, 2018, according to issuance, the sale of the special tax district bonds of the Terre Haute Sanitary District.
Petitioner?
Members of council, Chuck Anis, city engineer. We come tonight before you for this acceptance of the bond. This is the bond for the new main lift station. And you can see in the resolution that, or the special ordinance, I'm sorry, it's a maximum not to exceed $70 million. This, we've, we've met with most of you, and discussed the current state of our cost estimates and the design. We had a little, this has been a little bit of a change in the schedule. Last year, when we came to you, we intended, fully intended to have the design completed before we came to the council and asked for the bond. But the SRF, who is our banker in this transaction, asked us to move up the schedule. And we need a vote from the council before October 1st, saying that we do, in fact, need this money. There are three options that Dennis Otten and Dean Rogers have worked out, and they're here tonight to answer any questions you might have regarding the bond. But I'll take a stab at answering any questions you might have, and they'll be happy to back me up, I'm sure.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on special ordinance 30, 2018? Council? Councilman Nasser?
Chuck, I appreciate you asking some of the council members to come up and get a update, and I took advantage of that, and I appreciate you and Marcus doing that for the council. A couple of questions I had, and I just want, I know you answered them, but I want to hear the public to know the answers to those questions. Where are we at with regards to IDM and EPA on our total cost of the long-term control project, or plan?
We have not approached them on revising the plan.
Okay. Are we going to do that?
Yes, we're still gathering information.
Wouldn't that be prudent that we do that conversation before we added any more debt to the sanitary district?
I don't, we're trying to keep on schedule, and we can enter into the negotiations now, but our intention right now is to keep on schedule with the second phase.
Okay. And so if we're not going to have that conversation now, when do we plan on having that conversation?
Probably this winter would be a good time. After, when the bids come in, before the construction starts. I don't, I think we're still, we're still on schedule to break ground next spring with the main lift station. It's going to be required regardless of any future modifications to the plan. Yeah, I mean, we're, this is mostly, this is mostly about replacing the 55-year-old main lift station that is obsolete and falling apart. It does have a component to the long-term control plan, but this project is mostly about replacing that.
Okay. And just a reminder, what was the total cost of the long-term control plan that we were asked to do, and how did they come up with that figure?
Cost was back in 2010, I think it was, when all the project would be built out, was $120 million for the 20-year period.
So where are we at currently?
Total price, including this project, was probably about $900 million.
Does that include the plan itself? So that wasn't included in the long-term control plan?
It has a, it has a long-term control plan component, and we increased the capacity of the plant, weather, but the plan needed to be replaced without the opportunity to do it. It's the capacity of the plant for weather. The tax control plan was not...
So does IDM and EPA use that figure for calculation? How much we're supposed to total use, total spend on the project? Do they use the plan itself? All right. And then, when we discussed this week, the cost, you know, the workshop kind of bought some of the cost down a little bit, where does that stand now with the cost estimate?
The cost estimate right now is at about $62 million.
Okay. So why don't we ask for $65 million instead of $70, for the ordinance?
Because there, in addition to the cost of the main lift station, there is a green infrastructure project of $3 million to be added to that, plus, this is a maximum not to exceed number. The SRF is not going to let us spend that money on anything else. So if we have a little cushion, and we haven't gone to bid yet, so our cost estimate, if you, I mean, it is just that. And we need a little cushion beyond this, beyond our cost estimate, just to make sure that we do not go over.
Okay, so, and just a couple more questions. The long-term control plan was designed in partnership with HWC, correct?
HWC is our program manager on the long-term control plan.
Okay. And CHA is the one that's doing the next?
They're designing the main lift station.
Okay. And I know you had mentioned that they utilized another firm to come up to check their numbers?
CHA hired a sub, I guess a subconsultant, to do, give them a cost opinion on the main lift station project.
So they chose that person? They paid that person? Did that come out of our expense, using, what was it, Cummings? Is that?
Cummings is the name of the firm. They selected them.
Did we pay for that, or did they pay for that?
I suppose, it depends on how you look at it. It came out of their fee. So yeah, we paid them, they paid the subconsultant.
Why wouldn't we choose somebody else to look at the sector work? Why were they able to choose the third party?
That's, they're, they are working for CHA. CHA has the rights, I guess, to hire whatever subconsultant they choose. I mean, we don't get into that. But I'm sure they've hired a geotechnical firm to do soils analysis. We did not pick them. CHA picked those people.
Did Han and Wackle, did they look at the, the latest figures?
I think they may have. I'm not sure if they've really poured through them. They probably, I know they have been, they have been brought up to speed on the context of Han and...
So I just want to clarify, we are paying someone, Han and Wackle did the original design work.
Right.
And we're asking CHA to do the space. And they chose someone to, we paid them to choose someone to look at their figures, correct?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Are you?
Councilman Garrison?
Hey Chuck, I got a few questions here. I think five or six. My understanding is, there's a current bond already in place that sunsets soon. Do we know when that goes away?
I think it's January of 19. Right. Last payment's coming out.
January 19. And so this one, by the time, if this gets approved and goes through the process, will they, they match up pretty close, ultimately?
That's the intent.
I'll, go ahead. Sure.
It's important to remember, too, that if we don't bond out again, we lose those property tax dollars, which are about $6 million a year.
Right. I was going to get into that.
Okay, just so, that's, that's the critical thing.
Yeah, right. I've tried, I've got a processor, I was going to walk through this. I had a great conversation with Marcus, and I was trying to look for the benefits, you know, for the city, but also for residents who might be watching. So we had talked about some debt is good, and by maintaining this debt, once sunsets, the new one comes in, we can maintain that levy, correct?
Correct. The way the sanitary district is set up, we cannot levy property taxes without debt. I know that's kind of hard to wrap your head around, but that's the way the system is set up. So we have to keep borrowing money, doing projects to levy that. If we, if we stop doing that, then we lose that property tax. That property tax just gets distributed off into the other taxing entities. So it seems to make sense to us that we keep, we have these projects to do, we keep borrowing, you know, we keep bonding for these projects, and we maintain our levy.
Sure. Is there any estimation of what we would lose in dollars annually if this does not go through?
I think it's about $6 million.
$6 million here goes away?
Yeah, well, like you said, it doesn't, it doesn't really go away, it just gets distributed among the other taxing entities. It, you know, you're, the way the taxes are set up now, you're capped, that money, you're not going to pay any more in property taxes. That money that would have been the sanitary district's money would be distributed.
Okay, great. And so, and this is also according to Marcus and the conversation I had, this is a property tax bond, so there will be no rate changes?
That's correct.
That's one of the bigger benefits. I just wanted to make sure we hit that. That's one of the bigger benefits, I just wanted to make sure we hit that. Right?
Yep.
And then just the length of bond, do we, we know how long that's going to be?
I'm not sure. Duration, 20 years? Our county tells us 20 years.
20 years, and there was one portion too, that if we did this, by the end of this year, we get a better, better interest rate, it could save as much as $2 million?
It's almost four.
Four million?
The assurance that the SRF needs from the council and from the city is for some 2% low-interest money. They have, you can imagine, there's some demand out there for this cheap money, so they need assurance. Do you guys really want this cheap money? Because if we don't, somebody else will. And so if we don't, if we don't take advantage of this, this low-interest money, it'll go to other communities and then we'll be left with, let's say, more expensive money, borrowing more expensive money come 2019. The cost savings on interest has been calculated, it's almost $4 million.
Fantastic. Well, I just tried to extrapolate as many benefits as I could out of this for everybody. I didn't hear any negatives, are there any other benefits I missed or any negatives?
It just moves up the schedule by a couple of months, really.
And if this goes through, when do you think you'll be able to start turning dirt?
Spring.
Spring, right. All right, I yield.
Chuck, could you just explain for us, but also more importantly for the public, what you mean by other taxing entities? I think people might think it's going to go into the general fund or something.
Go to the county, go to the school corporation, go to the airport, go to the library. Sorry, did you want?
I followed this pretty closely for a while, and it's interesting how this works. If any body reduces their budget and gives up levy, then those taxes get redistributed. So in this case, if we gave up $6 million a year, the city would actually get some money back for the general fund because we would be the beneficiary of that, but so would the school corporation and the library and the airport and the county, you know, so then it's gone and we would have to raise sewer rates then to make up for that $6 million is what it turns around to be, and we don't want to do that.
And I want to make a quick comment as well. That's exactly what I was going to ask. I was going to ask if we do lose that on the $6 plus million that would, would in turn increase the probability that sewage rates would be again increased. Is that an accurate statement?
That is correct. We would not have to do that, we'd continue to do what we've been doing.
Thank you. I yield. Council, Councilman Elliott.
And then the actual amount gets adjusted down once the actual cost is known.
Right, right, we, this just authorizes us to get up to $70 million bond, but we're not going to go get a 72, or $70 million bond, we're going to get the bond for the amount that we need.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. President. Councilman Nation.
Chuck, thanks for your patience with the council and for answering all of our questions and inviting us to come and meet with you. My fellow council members remember when the administration brought this to us before we put the brakes on it because it seemed like it was too much money. Since then, a number of us have attended meetings that have been held, including the consultants representing, representatives of the administration through engineering, wastewater treatment plant workers and leadership, and I personally watched them all work together to try to drive down costs and weigh options and have a real conversation about, you know, what they could do. Personally, speaking for myself, I'm confident that they did their job. And I also, as someone who is concerned about the health of the Wall Bash River and has been involved in one way or another in the long-term control plan since its inception, I recognize the value of these efforts in these two of our long-term control plan. I think it's time for this council to go ahead and vote, give them their authorization to keep moving forward on this project, and if there are no further questions, I move that we, oh wait, this is, is this one, we have to vote to vote or? I move that we vote to vote on this tonight.
Second. It has been moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Oller, that we take action tonight on special ordinance 30-2018. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Post. We can take action on this ordinance tonight.
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
I move that we vote to confirm special ordinance number 30-2018.
Second. It has been moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Oller, that we approve special ordinance 30-2018. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Post. No. It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chuck.
Next item, please.
Resolution 13-2018, authorizing a temporary loan from the Terre Haute Sanitary District Operating Fund of the Terre Haute Sanitarious District Bond Fund and the extension of a current temporary loan.
Petitioner.
For the record, Dennis Otten, we've been acting as bond counsel to the sanitary district. The resolution that's before you tonight is kind of a, I'll call it a companion or follow-up resolution to one that we had before you, I think it was back in June of this year. And then what this deals with is kind of a cash flow matter with respect to moving funds from the sanitary revenue fund to the bond fund and treating those, documenting those as a loan for purposes of making the general obligation bond payments. And really, nothing has changed from the discussion we had back in June. These will be before you periodically, as long as you've got geo-bonds out there with the sanitary district to help make up the circuit breaker shortfall and maximize the debt service levy that can be approved through the LGF. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have Dean Rogers from Excham Vahov and Associates here as well.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on special, I'm sorry, on resolution 13-2018? Council? Councilman Elliott.
Yeah, we, we had a very similar resolution to this back in June, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the one we passed five before, and after we passed it five before, I emailed Paige Sansone the next day or two and asked what the consequences would have been in our property tax revenue had we not approved that, and it would have been a reduction of $2,283,000 of property tax revenue. And I therefore presume this is the same purpose.
Yes.
And this resolution, because that just approved that loan up to December or something?
Yes, this is actually for the January one payment on the bonds. The one that was done in June was for the July payment, and you'll see the loan in there, Councilman, is for a not to exceed amount that matches perfectly with the debt service that's coming due in the January payment. The actual amount of the loan is probably not going to be that much, and you'll see we've also extended that previous loan for an additional six months because the levies that are going to come in won't be enough to totally repay that loan by the end of the year, and by statute, we can do that, but we have to get council approval to extend that loan.
Thank you.
I yield.
No, not a resolution.
Right. Councilman Nation.
There's no further discussion, I move to approve resolution 13-2018.
Second. It has been moved by Councilman Nazar, seconded by Councilwoman Oller, that we approve resolution 13-2018. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Post. No. Opposing? Councilman Crossen, Councilman Nasser. All right, resolution 13 passes.
Move to adjourn.
It has been moved to adjourn by Councilman Nazar, seconded by Councilwoman Oller. Those in favor, please say aye. 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 Post. Meeting is adjourned.